The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children and proudly we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not so good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Oktibahaw County Hospital, we are celebrating 30 years of being your lifelong choice in health care.
First matter of business is the approval of the agenda for the meeting. I have one revision, and that is under Mayor's Business to add the consideration of the appointment of board members to the U.S. Census Complete Count Committee. Is there any objection to that revision? Any objection? Are there any other revisions to the agendas written?
Mayor?
Alden Parker.
Under Electric Department, E1, we have it on, we have it denoted for the consent agenda, but it didn't appear in the appendix of the consent agenda. So, I'll just make a note that, to make sure we, to make a note of the E1 under Electric Department is, should be in the appendix on the consent agenda.
All right, so Alderman Parker has proposed to revise the consent agenda, to revise the appendix, which is the items placed on the consent agenda to include item E1, Electric Department. Is there any objection to that revision? Any objection? Seeing none, please note the change. Are there any other proposed revisions? Any further proposed revisions? Further revisions? Seeing none, a motion to approve the agendas in order. Some of the motions been made to approve the agenda by Alderman Corrigan here, second.
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Ald is in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ald is opposed, please signify by saying nay. Message clearly passes. Is there any objection to the approval of the consent agenda as written? Any objection? Any objection? Seeing none, the consent agenda is approved. All right, there are no minutes to approve at this time. So, we will now move into comments by the mayor and board. And I would first like to recognize some new members of the city workforce. First, we have Michael Reese. Michael is a new employee in the Water Department. Michael's a Starkville resident and a graduate of Starkville High, and actually attended EMCC. Prior to working for the city, Michael worked at Motor Guide, also worked at Bryan Foods, and AmeriCold Logistics in West Point. Michael, it's a pleasure to welcome you to the city workforce.
Glad to be here.
We have three new employees in the sanitation department. First, let me introduce Quentin Hendricks. And Quentin is a Starkville native and a recent graduate of Starkville High School. Quentin's dad, John, also works for the city in the Animal Control Unit. His dad is currently on leave, serving our country in Iraq. Quentin, we're glad to have you as part of the city workforce. Next new employee for the sanitation department is Perry Cummings. And Perry attended high school in Clay County and has since worked in a landscaping business at Bulldog Lanes. He has four children, ranging from age one to 10. In addition to spending time with his family, Perry loves to sing. Perry, we're happy to have you as part of the city workforce. And finally, let me introduce Darren Bush. Darren is also a Starkville native and a graduate of Starkville High. Darren has actually been previously employed with the city and did an excellent job his first time around. Darren has four children and one grandchild. Darren, we're happy to have you with the city. All right. And I have one other comment that I'm going to ask for some help on because it doesn't appear anywhere else on the agenda. Okay, our bond rating and the subsequent bids that we accepted for the issuance of the bonds have come in. We have been given a nice rate for the issuance of bonds, the resolution of which has already technically been approved on the consent agenda. I will ask Randy Wall to carry us through the process real fast.
The, well, just summarize real quickly and then y'all ask me whatever you want to. Three bids were received. The lowest interest rate bid, which is your best bid, was by Duncan Williams at 3.234469, followed closely by Cruz at a 3.2988 something, and Hancock Bank, which had a 3.4. So, you did very well. Your last, your last bonds, Marquita and I were talking about earlier, I think came in just a hair under three, so the two together is extremely low rates for your projects this year. And the difference could maybe be a little bit different in the ratings, but mainly probably the timing. Now, part of this process is that you go through a rating process. Each time you do bonds, you have to get them rerated or you lose your ratings on all your past ones. So, you received a rating this time. It was actually a drop down from an A3 to an A1 with a negative watch. Everything in the report was extremely complimentary, recognized your growth, recognized your good prospects. The negative came down to only one thing, and that was that your general fund had dropped significantly over the last three years, I think it is. So, be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions, comments? The one comment I will make is while we did get a very good rating that led to a nice interest rate for this issuance, we have to get our general fund up in the future. So, as we prepare to budget next year, that's something that we have to keep fresh in our minds because it will impact our ability to issue debt in the future.
Mayor, if I might comment further on that point. In conversation with the rating agency, it was very clear that the one thing that they're going to be watching is your general fund balance. If it goes down below what's projected now, you will, you will take another hit and you'll drop into the Bs. I think the Marquita and Lynn and others with the city did a very nice job of keeping the city in the A by effectively presenting the offsetting things and keeping the rating agency from dropping into the Bs. But, and it's clear of two things. One is if you're able to raise your general fund balance upward, not necessarily even as high as it has been, but if you raise it up from what it is now, you will be in good and give the rating agency comfort that it's moving in the right direction, you're going to be in very good shape for a ratings upgrade. If it, if it drop, if it drops anymore, then you're going to go into the Bs.
Are there any other questions, comments? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wall. All right, next, we have a pair of comments from Alderman Carver.
Mr. Mayor, it won't take long, I can just kind of discuss both of them together. But, the first is there was a winner for the Name the Park competition, which is at the corner of Avenue of Patriots and Whitfield Street, and it's going to be named Patriots Park. And the winner was a man by the name of Jason Light, and we're in the process right now of getting a sign completed. The sign worked, and then it'll be about three weeks to a month out, and we'll have photo opportunity for Mr. Jason and have everybody down that day. Secondly, is just want to recognize the Starkville Parks and Recs Department. They went to the Mississippi Recreation and Parks Association about a month ago in McComb, Mississippi, and they won one award, they won two. The first was the Best Recreation Program. This was for the silly sports camp this summer. And then the second award that the Starkville Parks and Recs won was the Best Design Award from New Multi-Carper Center out on Lynn Lane. So, just want to have an opportunity to recognize Starkville Parks and Recs for this.
May I add that in the Parks and Rec world, those awards are quite an honor to our city.
Are there any further comments from the members of the board? Any further comments? Any further comments? Seeing none, we'll now move into citizen comments.
Good evening, the mayor and board. Hi, Mayor. Mr. Turner.
Thank you, Alderman.
Since we begin, firstly, we need to have those sirens test and have those sirens where we can hear them. Bad weather, oh, bad weather that we have had. Up on, and no sirens, no nothing. The last administration would test them on cheese, and then when, when, when dark clouds come, they will, they will go off. So, we need to have this too. If you want to take care of it, take care of it, because that may be wrong.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Are there any further citizen comments? Any further citizen comments? Any further citizen comments? Seeing none, we'll move into public appearances, and we have one public appearance tonight from Dr. Linda Southward on the Blue Cross Blue Shield Healthy Hometown Competition. Yes.
Thank you for the opportunity to come before the board and the mayor and the city clerk and city attorney and residents who are here because I've lived in Starkville consecutively since 1989. This is my first appearance before the Board of Aldermen, and so I want to thank you for the opportunity. But I think with that being said, as sort of a backdrop, I would not be coming unless I think that this is of vital importance and opportunity. We just heard this wonderful recognition of Starkville Parks and Recreation two awards. We know about the farmers markets, we know about Bike Pass, we know about trying to get Lynn Lane extensions, we know the smoke-free status of the, the community in restaurants, et cetera. We know that the Starkville Public Schools, I think just two weeks ago, received a national award from the USDA. All of those are wonderful kudos for the state, for the state of the state of Starkville. And I want to commend you for all of the work that you've done in previous boards and what this board is continuing to, to do. And I became aware at the end of August that the Blue Cross Blue Shield Foundation, which is separate from the Blue Cross Blue Shield Corporation, but the Blue Cross Blue Shield Foundation of Mississippi was letting a request for, for proposals and applications for cities and towns all across Mississippi, and that was led September the first. When you look at the criteria that's already on there and the ones that I just listed, Starkville is posed in a very great place to compete, but we're not there yet. So, I'm really coming here to ask for your support to be, to demonstrate the leadership that we need to have in this town, in this community, for Starkville to be known as the healthiest community in Mississippi. Can you imagine what that would do, first of all, for the health, the health of our children? I think you may have this handout, if you're looking at the health reasons, there's a whole set of health reasons. We know for the state, and this is not on your handout, but we know in the state of Mississippi, 44.4% of all of our children statewide are either overweight or obese. That's almost one in two. We know there's not that, quite of that percentage, but pretty high of adults in, in the, in the state, and certainly the worst in the country. But we all know, and you know, here as city leaders, that change takes place one community, one family, one community, one state at a time. And we have just an unprecedented opportunity. So, when you look at the two primary reasons, when we look at the high rates of childhood obesity in Mississippi, it is great concern because of the serious consequences. Overweight children are at risk for early development of chronic disease leading to disability and premature death. Overweight children miss more school days and demonstrate lower academic performance on average than children who are not overweight or obese. Childhood obesity is a significant predictor of coronary heart disease in adulthood. Overweight adolescents have a 70% chance of becoming overweight or obese adults. Overweight and obese individuals are at increased risk for the following. And you think about all of the biological markers that I'm going to tick off here, you think about people in your own family in this tension, osteoporosis, sleep apnea, gallbladder disease, respiratory problems, stroke, endometrial cancer, breast cancer, colon cancer, prostate cancer, depression, and other conditions. All are, have a higher risk if someone is overweight and obese. And when we look at the aging population, obesity accounts for a substantial part of increased disability in adults, and is expected to result in a 10 to 25% increase in nursing home admissions in a little more than 10 years, in the year 2020. It could be anywhere from 10 to 25%. Then there's a whole bundle of reasons, economic reasons. Obesity accounts for approximately 9.1% of annual medical expenditures, the estimated annual health care cost attributed to adult obesity, and again, this was some of the latest stats available, in 2003 is $757 million. A little over 200 million of that went to Medicare, a little over 200 million of that went to Medicaid. Approximately 8% of private employer medical claims are due to overweight and obesity, and about 27% of the increase in medical costs from 1987 to 2001 was due to obesity. The source of this was from Teresa Hannan, who is well-known in the state and is Executive Director of the Center for Mississippi Health Policy. So, what are the additional reasons for making an application? Just, just for the record, and again, to reinforce what I'm asking you as a board and the mayor to support in this application. It's a tremendous opportunity for Starkville. It clearly is a win-win-win all the way around for our citizens, for our children, for our youth, for our seniors. Imagine what the marketing could look like if we are the healthy in attracting businesses and attracting students and attracting retirees, et cetera, if we're known as Mississippi's healthiest community. And for economic development, what am I asking you? I'm asking for your endorsement of this application. I'm asking for your time and commitment. One of the criteria is that the mayor of the committee that's required by the Blue Cross Blue Shield Foundation group in the, in the request for proposal is that the mayor and at least one alderperson be on this committee of 10 to 15. And then there's a whole list of others. I won't read those to you. I think you all have in your packet an application of those. But it's certainly, as I said earlier, we're already, I think, really poised at a great position, great things are going on in Starkville as far as the health of the community. But I think that if we can just tweak that up to another level, we're going to be in strong competition. And there is strong competition out there among people that I've been talking with when they say, oh, well, well, I won't name the names of the towns who think they're going to get it. And I said, well, you know, if Starkville, if Starkville is going to apply for this, and if I'm going to be involved, we're not going to spend our time and energy unless we think that we can get it. So, that's, and I've had discussions with Mayor Wiseman about this, but additional support is needed beyond just the board and, and the council here. But we need city halls involved, as I just mentioned, churches, businesses, MSU, civic groups. We need to get everyone involved, and what a wonderful resource we have here, right down the street at Mississippi State University. So, at the very least, what we can do by going through this application process is raise awareness to have a healthier, more productive community as a result of going through the application process. The application process is due, the application is due April the 16th, and then the winners will be named this summer, I believe in June or July at the Municipal League. And so, how wonderful it would be if Starkville brought back the prize. And the prize, by the way, for each of the small, medium, and large communities, $25,000 prize. For the overall, for the healthiest community, it's $50,000. And then the municipal, the municipal, each of you would have to decide in the committee how we would use that money in a way to promote even more of a healthy environment within Starkville. So, I just once again want to close by saying thank you for what you've already done. Thank you for giving me the opportunity as a citizen in Starkville the first time in 20 years to come before you with an area that I think we can all relate to, that is very near and dear to our heart, certainly to mine, and again, given what you've already done for the city, I think it's very important, we need to have a diverse group of individuals across the entire city for this to really be the strongest application it can. Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments? Alderman Carver.
I don't know the answer to this, but who will be the health and wellness champion? I'm assuming it's going to be you, kind of spearheading this?
I think that's what the mayor has assumed. We've had a couple of conversations about it, so, but I am open. There are clearly, I'm sure there are other people who are very capable and qualified to do this. I would be willing to help facilitate this.
Dr. Southward approached me, I guess, just with the idea of Starkville applying generally about a month ago. From there, knowing Dr. Southward's background in, in public health, and also her enthusiasm bringing this project forward, I asked if it would be an effort she would be interested in spearheading. And she said essentially yes, provided that the city is behind it. We'll, we'll discuss to what extent the city will be behind it in a, in a moment. But I, I think in addition to the potential cash prize and the recognition that can come from this, it also could be a, a big plus for the city in establishing a template or a checklist and analyzing where we are from, from a basic public health standpoint as a community. So, it's something I'm enthusiastic about, and I'm enthusiastic about somebody with Dr. Southward's expertise wanting to spearhead it. Any questions, comments? Any further questions? Seeing none, thank you, Dr. South. All right, next order of business is a public hearing on the proposed amendments to the sidewalk ordinance. This time, I will open the public hearing, and I will ask Alderman Dumas, who is the board liaison to the sidewalk committee, to give a synopsis of the proposed amendments to the sidewalk ordinance.
I'm going to ask Jim Gafford and Edward Kemp if they'll go ahead and come forward. I'm, I'm going to briefly just talk about what the intent is here and then pass the, pass the mic to them so they can be more detailed in their, in their description of what's going on. The sidewalk ordinance that, that's being revised and amended is, was passed in May of 2009, and I think it's important to note that there is no material change in what we're doing here today. There's a couple of things that are happening. One is some clarification of some language, but I think most importantly is some clarification of intent, which was, that, that they can go into more detail with, with some of the intent that was originally written into the amendment, or to the ordinance that was not clearly stated. And I think there's some language changes that are there, some additions that have been there. Part of our staff, or part of our board packet, staff recommendations, you will see a payment in lieu option. That option has been stricken as advised by the city attorney. And I don't know if, if either of you want to let Chris, the city attorney, talk about that or not, but I want to just say that, that at this time, that's been stricken, that it's not under the proposed amendment at this time. So, if y'all want to go ahead and add more detail of depth to what's been mentioned, talk about some of the additional changes and then.
Sure. Well, I guess, yeah. Yeah. Well, this was passed in 2009, and as Jeremiah stated, there aren't any real material changes to the purpose. The original purpose and intent was essentially to create actual design standards and requirements for the installation of sidewalks on not only new infrastructure, but as well as existing infrastructure, particularly in, in our commercial sectors, for the existing infrastructure, that is. With the idea that in the short terms, probably will create some disconnected sidewalks, but in the long term, we will actually see, as we have redevelopment in Starkville over the course of time, more connectivity, more pedestrian connectivity. And that was, that was really the original intent. It's, it's just one facet in how we should probably attack better pedestrian connectivity in Starkville, which in my opinion is, is woefully inadequate. The changes mostly that we've done are, are just to clarify definitions and, and improve language so that the intent is, is better set forth. And all the changes within the ordinance that you should have in your packets, anything new is going to be double underlined, and anything that's been removed should be stricken. So, it's pretty easy to see. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
For the sake of clarification, since it's been published, there has been some discussion about it. I will ask the city attorney to weigh in on the issue of a, a payment in lieu of sidewalks. It was an initial part of the proposal, but as Alderman Dumas noted, is now not currently a part of the proposal.
I was asked to look into this issue by Mr. Kemp and Chief Administrative Officer Lynn Spruill, and there's a case that I believe would control this, and it's from the Mississippi Supreme Court in 2006. The case is called Ocean Springs versus Home Builders. And in that case, there was a impact fee ordinance where the builders would have to pay a fee in order to build. And I believe that based on that case, even though this isn't a classic impact fee ordinance, it's, it's almost a reverse impact fee in that you're paying not to build a sidewalk. Nevertheless, that case would control, and this would be deemed to be an illegal tax rather than a permissible impact fee. And therefore, I made the recommendation to the board that that be stricken.
If I can just speak to the reason we put that in there, and I totally understand legally why, why it's not, not allowed. Without some type of trigger, anyone can come before you and say that it's just too expensive for me to install sidewalks. And we don't feel as, as a sidewalk committee, I don't, I don't believe that's the case. We're going to take this back to the committee and try to come up with a creative solution to this problem, perhaps create some type of a design review board or what have you. I don't know exactly what the solution's going to be, but that was the reason for having that payment lieu option was if you have something, a topographical problem that's going to prohibit you, it's going to be prohibitively expensive to install a sidewalk. We would allow an exception, but that exception would still require you to pay for what the cost of a normal sidewalk would be without severe topographical impediments.
Mr. Mayor, may I be recognized? Alderman Parker.
Mr. Chairman, in light of the fact that the former board approved the sidewalk ordinance on May 19, 2009, of course, I want to say at this time that we do appreciate your and other members' contributions to the sidewalk committee. other members' contributions to the sidewalk committee. I just want to make sure that I clearly understand the amendments. You mentioned that some are to clarify definitions, but there are some proposed amendments outside the definitions section, some amendments in the permit section and the sidewalk requirements. I just want to make sure that I clearly understand what is the underlying basis, facts, and totality of the circumstances of any that's necessitating other proposed amendments in section, outside the definition section. In your response, is there any current situation that we're trying to accommodate? Normally, when we see these amendments, somebody or something, matter, thing, or situation is, is trying to be accommodated. I just make sure that before I vote on this in the next meeting, I want to know what I'm doing.
Yes, sir. Again, you know, outside the definitions, most of the added language is, is just to clarify our intent. And most of it came just through hypothetical case building on our part and saying, well, if we read it this way, then it doesn't, it may not read as we originally intended. For example, section 4.1 talks about requirements within city-owned streets and private streets. And I think we've changed the language to say city-owned and non-city-owned streets because there are some city-owned streets that are still public streets, they're just not owned by the city. So for example, that would be one of the changes that we made that just clarifies our intent.
Right. My last question is to get a little, plow a little bit straightforward. There's no present situation here that we're trying to, to call attention to.
No, sir.
Okay. And I didn't think so, but I just want to make sure I ask that, and it's supposed to assume. But thanks again for all your efforts. Yes, sir.
Further questions or comments for the chair of the sidewalk committee? Any further questions or comments? Alderman Carr.
I guess my question, just, just starting to think, you know, in case of a waiver, a waiver or anything like that, instead of, in this, instead of a lieu of payment, can you do any kind of like a surety bond or something where that person says, maybe I won't build now, but you know, if something ever happens in this area and everybody else pays, I'm responsible for, you know, this section? I'm just, just wondering about that, you know, future.
I think that's, that's an interesting idea. The only way I can speak to that is, let me write that down, and I'll take it back to the committee, and we'll discuss it and see if that's, that's one possible, possible solution.
Further questions or comments for the chair of the sidewalk committee? Any further questions or comments? Any further questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Gaff. We will now move into the public comment portion of the public hearing, and we will conduct this the way that has been standard practice since I took over as mayor, and that is, this will be a 30-minute period with each side, those in favor of proposed changes to sidewalk ordinance amendments, getting a maximum of 15 minutes with each speaker getting a maximum of three minutes, those opposed to getting a maximum of 15 minutes with each speaker getting a maximum of three minutes. Is there a speaker for the proposed changes to sidewalk? Do we have a speaker for? Seeing none, do we have a speaker against? Mr. Richardson? And please state your, your name for the rate.
Clayton Richardson. I thank you for allowing me to come before you. As, as all of you know, we've tried to get a permit to build a building at the corner of Stark Road and Clements Avenue. We got the permit, and we decided to give it back. And we asked for our money back, and after taking everything into account, we decided that the risk was not worth it. There were two areas. One area was the liability that was placed on us by the stormwater ordinance, in which we felt like it killed our estate planning, it killed any reason for having a corporation or an LLC. The other part of it was the added cost that was added to our job. Now, you'll say maybe we should have known that there would be these costs. We came to the city, we got all the information that we thought we needed to have to build this building. I went to Pritchard Engineering, we went over it, couldn't find anything in there that we didn't think we could do. So we employed Pritchard to draw the drawings, we did them. It was after that that I went down and contracted with our LEC to build this building. After we went through the review, we ended up with approximately $50,000 more cost to the, to the project. Of that cost, $13,500 amounted to the sidewalk. A sidewalk that was on Stark Road and a sidewalk that was on Clements Avenue. There's not another linear foot on either of those streets. There's not a sidewalk in any of the houses on Upper Lowell Crossing on the city property or in Green Oaks for that matter. I'm not opposed to sidewalks, but I am opposed to singling out a project like this, one, one somebody. If sidewalks are good for the community, then let's pay for them through taxes. Let's let all of us pay for them, not just one somebody. We have approximately 200,000 square feet of buildings in this town, approximately 40% or more are new businesses that we brought in. This $13,500 sidewalk, sir.
I was just telling you, I had one minute. And it, it looks like you may be the only speaker.
I'm going to be, I'm going to be through. All this $13,500 sidewalk cost is going to cost my customer approximately $130 per month forever. We, we can't just keep adding all these things to the wagon, it just can't take it. You're making me be uncompetitive. And we've now come to the point that we're not building Starkville because of the things that's added, stormwater and this. Help keep me competitive by allowing me to build. We've got 14 and a half acres to build on. Let's make Starkville grow. All the increase in sales tax has come about through entrepreneurial companies doing what they're doing. The company we were building for is five years old, approximately 20 employees who are professionals and make more than average, and, you know, we want to keep these kind of people here. So my, my parting comments to you are, is I don't know any of you very well, but your reputation is that you're good common sense people. And if anything I've had to say to you tonight, you ought to know something is wrong. And look at this sidewalk ordinance, and make sure it's something we need. If we need a sidewalk, it's for everybody and not just a select few to pay for it. Thank you so much. Any, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Richardson.
Thank you.
We'll move into questions in a second. Let me just make sure there's no more speakers. Are there any speakers for? Are there any more speakers against? Okay. Now move into discussion on the proposed amendments to the sidewalk ordinance. Discussion by members of the board. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Okay. Seeing none, public hearing now closed. All right. Next order of business is mayor's business, and I have three matters for discussion. The first is a discussion of holding a long-range... It's because it is. Basically, after talking with another mayor, who is a longtime mayor, about how you, you get the cohesive agenda of, of the city moving in the same direction, he said one of the things that he has had a great amount of success with over the years is getting the members of his board together for a retreat. I think it's an excellent idea, going as much of the day as possible with work schedules on Friday, and then into the, the next day on Saturday. What I am envisioning is in the month of January, taking a Friday or Saturday where it is convenient for the, the members of the board, having this very extended work session, but I want to build into it. And I want to compile, I guess, just your brainstormed list of, of issues that are both very specific, you know, the drainage issues in your ward, other infrastructural issues that are very easy to put a, a beat on, and also the more all-encompassing issues like our comprehensive plan and, and other things like that. And then move forward in that January process by getting a facilitator to come in and take us all through the process. So we leave with both a unified understanding of where we're going and also some organization the, the business of the city over the next four years. I guess also in conjunction with this, I would like to have a sit-down with each of you, one-on-one. We, we've been working together nearly four months now. It, it's a good time for me to get some feedback and to talk through what the issues are that, that you would like for us to address in that potential retreat. Now, that's, I guess, my, my general concept. We don't have to go anywhere specific with this tonight. I guess if y'all want to give me guidance on directions, you, you'd like to see the retreat take. If we want to go so far as to look at some dates in January, we can do that as well. If you want to just give me general thumbs up, thumbs down on the idea, any feedback's appreciated. Discussion.
Alderman.
Well, I'll just say, we did it with the last board, and it was pretty helpful to do. My advice there would be try to get a facilitator from actually out of the area to provide sort of an independent view as we're discussing some of the matters. And if there's going to be costs associated with this, Phyllis Benson has previously told me that, I believe it's through ARC, there's a funding source called FlexiFunds that can be used to help pay for certain events like this. So you may want to look into that.
Further comments? Discussion?
Do y'all want to look at any dates now? Do y'all want to do that at the next meeting? We could come at the next meeting with a, a calendar like we've done setting dates in the past. All right?
Next meeting.
That's what we'll do. Alderman Carr, if you have some...
I'm all for this idea, but is the city planner going to be there? Are you planning on him being there and the department heads, or just the board and the mayor?
I, I've thought a little bit about this, and I'm, I'm, I'm open to any, any ideas you may have on the subject. I guess a, an initial thought I've had is it might be a good idea to have the chief administrative officer in. The main thing I'm concerned about, about having all department heads in is the, the process can get too cumbersome to get something out of it. You know, there's already going to be, I guess, ideas that are going to be all over the map, and organizing those and getting a collective vision is not an easy thing to do. I think the, the, the less people that are in the room talking about it, the easier that process is. One thing I had thought about is we go, go through this process where the board kind of sets a broad vision and the roadmap, and then we can come back in and do a similar type of process internally with the city staff. In other words, we take the board's vision, give it to the city staff, go through with a facilitator, and, and get to some of the minutia during the work week.
Further comments? Questions?
I'm all for it. I, I think it'd be good to have, if you take your two-day advan, if you take your two-day model, then we, the, the board are together for that first day, and then perhaps have whatever department heads, if all not, if not all of them together, the second day. But I'm all for it. I, I think we need to look at whatever we have to do to make it happen.
Further discussion?
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none. Next matter on the agenda is consideration of establishing an ad hoc committee for the first purpose of entering the Healthy Hometown Competition. We don't have to do this exactly like this, or I guess this is not the only way to take action on it. The, the main thing that is needed for Dr. Southward to go forward and, and prepare this application is it does require at least one member of the board to be on the committee. So I guess there's, there's two ways. I can see there may be more to handle this. We, we can establish an official Healthy Hometown Committee that, that will exist like some of our other ad hoc committees, or we can appoint as many members of the, the board that are interested in serving on this committee, and they, me, and Dr. Southward can just periodically report to the board on the progress of preparing the application. Is, is this something y'all are up for doing, I guess probably as a first agenda?
I'm absolutely for it, and I think it would be good if we could agree to perhaps move forward. I agree with Dr. Southward leading the charge here, but I think there, there should be some thought put into the additional persons serving on this committee from the standpoint of external to the city itself, or to the, to the city employees. Because I think, as she mentioned, I mean, we have some fantastic people in this community that can put this thing together in a manner that's, that would be hard to beat. Just need to locate those and figure that, see who those individuals are and make sure they're willing to serve.
And she's got some, some ideas on particularly some of the professionals in, in the field that'll be helpful. And I think also particularly on some of the community figures, which are also on this committee, people that are active in the community, she would depend heavily on representatives from the city to help identify people that might be interested. I guess it, it, it depends on those, those one of two ways you want to go. I don't think there's any reason this, this has to be established as an ad hoc committee. Certainly, we can establish it as an ad hoc committee and come back and then approve all the members after whoever the board members that are interested in being on the committee and may get with Dr. Southward and kind of identify those people. Or we can just appoint board members who are interested, and we can all go off and kind of run with it and wait till we have a product to come back to the board and take...
Could we move forward? Could, could we make a motion to move forward with this, adopting her, establishing her and obviously you as the mayor as the, the wellness champion and, and obviously you as the mayor? And then perhaps next meeting, present back to us a list of potential candidates to serve on this committee, whether it's ad hoc or not?
Yeah. That, that's certainly a potential way to go. I would add in addition to that, please go ahead and appoint at least one board member so that we have that structure hammered out. Alderman Vaughn?
I'll serve.
Okay.
Well, I make the motion that we, that we move forward. Let me see what the names here are. I look, I, I make a motion that we enter the city of Starkville into the Blue Cross Blue Shield Healthy Hometown Award Competition with Dr. Southward serving as the wellness champion, and Alderman Henry Vaughn serving as the Board of Alderman Committee Member, and Mayor Parker Wiseman as the mayor of the city of Starkville.
What was Dr. Southward talking about?
I think it was listed as wellness champion. And I don't know if that's, we'll just go with that.
All right. Alderman Dumas has moved to enter the city of Starkville in the Blue Cross Blue Shield Healthy Hometown Competition with Dr. Linda Southward serving as the wellness champion, and Mayor Wiseman and Alderman Vaughn serving on behalf of the city. Alderman Dumas, that's your motion?
That is my motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Corry, Alderman Dumas, and Mr. Fickel, the mayor.
I did not.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Message clear, it passes. All right. Next matter is fairly similar to that one, and that is the consideration of the appointment of board members to the Census Complete Count Committee. The, as, as you, you all know, this 2010 is a census year, very, very important year for the city. We get, we, along with everybody else in the country, get one time to be officially counted every 10 years, and this is our time. The number that we get out of this count will be the number that affects basically all of our federal and state funding that has arrived from population figures. It is very, very important that we do everything we can as a community... It is very, very important that we do everything we can as a community to ensure that everybody's counted. Raising awareness and doing whatever it takes to make sure that our number is not lower than it actually is when, when the census figures come out next year. The Census Bureau actually establishes the format for the Complete Count Committee. I have been working with Chancery Clerk Monica Banks. We were, I guess, the Census Bureau's designees in, in getting the Complete Count Committee together. And they give you kind of a, a, a template for various people in the committee to get into subcommittees to help raise awareness for the, the census. We have been doing that. We've had a mail out. We've got a meeting scheduled for next Tuesday at six o'clock. One thing that is also needed, and I know all of you are probably a little committed out at this point, is as many of you that are interested, we need you to volunteer to serve on the committee. I don't think this will be a very labor intensive activity. Some meetings here and there, you know, perhaps some, some other volunteer work in between. But it is needed to have, I guess, the support of public officials for the process. Are there any volunteers or discussion otherwise?
I'll volunteer for this one.
All right.
I'll also volunteer.
All right. And there's, there's really no official action that needs to be taken. If y'all want to approve something, you certainly can. Otherwise, I, I can just get your names and, and be in contact with you to make sure we're all on the same page with the, the meeting dates. Are there any other volunteers?
In what, which month is the census taken?
April. And basically, everything that'll be done will get this community ready to participate in, in the census program. One, one area of, of particular concern where we think we might be able to make significant headway is, is student population in the city. Technically by the census definition, every student at Mississippi State that lives in Starkville is a Starkville resident. And it is our thinking that, that, that population may have been undercounted in the past. That's an area of emphasis that maybe could potentially change our, our figures. Any further volunteer discussion? Okay, so I have Alderman Carver and Systrom as volunteers for the committee. And the meeting, the initial meeting will be next Tuesday, October twenty seventh at six o'clock in the courtroom of the Octavah County Courthouse. All right. Next matter for discussion is the consideration to approve P and Z item number RZ oh nine oh seven. Mr. Griffith?
The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children and proudly we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not so good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Octavah County Hospital, we are celebrating thirty years of being your lifelong choice in health care.
Three hundred A Sand Road in Ward Three and will affect approximately four acres of land. The applicant has stated that she and her children intend to move into a mobile home which will become their primary residence and has provided a letter which has included it with the staff report. Property was part of the nineteen ninety eight annexation and the area was designated as R five without complete explanation to the residents that mobile homes were not allowed in that zoning district except as a conditional use. A great majority of the properties in the area include mobile homes and this is why planning staff feels that the proposed zoning closely matches the actual use of properties in the area. Six property owners of record within one hundred sixty feet of the subject property were notified directly by mail at the request. The public hearing was published in the September twenty fifth edition of the Starkville Daily News. And a placard was posted on the site concurrent with the notice. Planning Office received no contact from anyone regarding the rezoning request and no public comments were received at the hearing. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the rezoning request based on an air in the city's official zoning map.
Questions, comments, Mr. Griffith? Or discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve P and Z item P RZ zero nine dash zero seven. Request by Ms. Fromica, Fromica Ward for a zoning change from R five to R six located at three hundred A Sand Road in Ward Three.
Alderman Dumas has made a motion to approve P and Z item number RZ oh nine oh seven. A request by Ms. For Michael Ward to, for a zoning change from R five multifamily high density to R six. Mobile Homes M H P M H S located at three hundred A Sand Road in Ward Three. Is that your motion?
It is.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Parker. Alderman Dumas, you wish to speak on merits?
I do not.
Alderman Corey.
As a reminder, with any zoning change, and I have no problem with the request, you have to have in the motion stating the reason for the zoning change, which I believe was just due to a change in the characteristics of the neighborhood. Is that correct?
Scripter's error.
I mean, I mean script, script. So I would make a motion to amend the motion to include a finding of fact of the cause of the zoning change to be due to a scripter's error.
All right, Alderman Corey has made a motion to amend Alderman Dumas' motion to include a finding of fact that the cause and the change in the zoning ordinance is a scripter's error.
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Perkins. Alderman Corey, do you wish to speak on the merits? Discussion, discussion, any discussion, any discussion? Will now move into a vote on Alderman Corey's motion to amend. All those in favor of Alderman Corey's amendment, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Amendment carries. Will now move back into discussion on Alderman Dumas' motion as amended. Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Alderman Dumas' motion as amended, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Major Quillip passes. Next matter for consideration is P and Z item number F P oh nine oh five.
Mayor, the next item is a request by Mr. Jeremy Taber for approval of the Belgrove condominiums phase one, a condominium plat located in an R five multifamily high density zone. The subject property is located on the east side of the intersection of South Montgomery Street and Yellow Jacket Drive in Ward Four. The applicant is proposing a condo plat of fifteen units on a one point two one acre site. A preliminary plat for the Belgrove project was approved in July of last year. All utilities will be provided by the city of Starkville and the electrical lines will be placed underground. The internal streets are private and will not be offered to the city for dedication. A note has been placed on the plat confirming this. A draft set of restrictive covenants were provided to harmless indemnification clause. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the final condo plat as proposed with fourteen conditions of approval provided by city staff. One commissioner abstained from voting due to his unfamiliar, unfamiliarity with the project. It has since been determined that condition number eleven regarding a memorandum of understanding is not necessary and should be struck.
Discussion. Alderman Corey.
Mayor, I'd move approval, P and Z item F P zero nine dash oh five with the thirteen recommendations provided, that being with number eleven streaking out.
Alderman Corey has made a motion to approve P and Z item number F P zero nine oh five with thirteen conditions recommended by staff excluding condition number eleven as presented in the packet. Alderman Corey, is that your motion?
It is.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Dumas. Alderman Corey, you wish to speak on the merits?
No.
Discussion, any discussion, any discussion, any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Alderman Corey's motion, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Major Quillip passes.
Thank you, Mayor and Board.
Thank you. All right, next matter for discussion is request of the approval of the city of Starkville Claims Docket for the Fire Department as of October fifteenth, two thousand nine.
Mr. Mayor, I ask to recuse myself.
Discussion.
Move approval.
Alderman Corey has moved approval of city Starkville Claims Docket for Fire Department as of October fifteenth, two thousand nine. Alderman Corey, is that your motion? Hear a second?
Second.
The motion been seconded by Alderman Dumas. Alderman Corey, you wish to speak on the merits?
No.
Discussion, discussion, seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Major Quillip passes. Next matter for consideration is the approval of the city of Starkville Claims Docket excluding the Fire Department as of October fifteenth, two thousand nine. Motion's been made by Alderman Corey to approve the, the city Starkville Claims Docket excluding the Fire Department as of October fifteenth, two thousand nine. Alderman Corey, is that your motion?
Yes.
Hear a second? Motion's been seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Alderman Corey, you wish to speak on the merits?
No.
Discussion, discussion, any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Major Quillip passes. All right. The only matter remaining on the agenda is potential executive session pending litigation. Unless someone has a reason, I, I, I do not have a reason. I think a, a closed session is warranted as there are no updates on the pending litigation.
Can we get a timestamp on the minutes?
Is there any discussion, any potential motions? A motion to adjourn would be in order.
Mayor, I move that we adjourn until November third, two thousand nine, five thirty at City Hall.
Alderman Corey has moved to adjourn until November third, two thousand nine, at five thirty at City Hall in the courtroom. Do I hear a second? Motion's been seconded by Alderman Perkins. Did you second it? Alderman Vaughn. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Getting adjourned. What time is it?
Six thirty two.
You're pretty good.
The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children and proudly we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not so good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Octavah County Hospital, we are celebrating thirty years of being your lifelong choice in health care.